And we are live.
Thank you, and welcome to the County Council's Caucus meeting. Those that are watching us via Facebook, we welcome comments. If you would like to send correspondence, you can do so. Today, we have a full agenda. We have department heads and council members online right now. We're going to get started. We'll start with Corporation Councils. When that Corporation Council Controller's Office, is there somebody there from the Controller's Office?
Yes, Delano Duff from the Controller's Office. Hello, everyone. We did file a March 2020 cash flow report. We had a couple of items that we wanted to point out in our report. As of March 31st, the city ended with 18.6 million in this account. We also want to make note, take note that we do have three payrolls that will get processed in the month of April. We normally have two payrolls that post a month. We're projecting the payroll to be about 26.7 million. Whereas compared to normally, that's around $17 million. Also, we're checking that the city will finish in a negative for the month of April, the cash account, as far as the City of Buffalo portion. We also know that with a combined count with the Board of Education, we should be okay. And as long as we receive, which we do plan on receiving, we'll get another state aid payment in a month of June, probably last week of June, around $98 million. So once we receive that payment, that'll put us back in a positive. Also, we're, we're seeing like a reduction in sales tax revenue, also in fines, mainly due to the COVID virus. And I think everyone's fully aware of that. So our cash management team basically is reviewing the cash receipts and disbursements throughout the month. And we are looking to have April's cash flow report to you guys sometime next month. So I don't know if anyone had any questions in regards to the cash flow report?
Any questions for the council members? Okay. Thank goodness for the school board. Thanks.
A question. Has there been any conversation with the state as far as their reduction? I know that, I know that the executive, Mr. Polling Card said that he's looking at a 30% reduction. So is our revenue being reduced by that?
Not, not that we're, we're, we still anticipate receiving that last state aid payment for the City of Buffalo in June 2020. I don't know if anyone, if administration was on the line, if they heard anything, but to my knowledge, we haven't heard anything.
Thank you.
And then second, if there's no more questions.
Oh, go right ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Dowell.
Okay, second, the Controller, she also filed a response to the City of Buffalo finances due to the COVID all the way up to June 30, 30. I mean, June 2020. It's a couple of items on there that we wanted to point out. We know it was a late file. So you guys, you'll see it on the agenda tomorrow, but we pointed out a couple of things in regards to where do we see the city at as of today? So we was able to run the numbers up until April 22nd. So at year-to-date revenue, we've received $341 million. And expenses, we've incurred $376 million. That's showing a deficit, a net deficit of $35 million as of April 22nd. But one thing we want to keep in mind is that we still have nine weeks left in this fiscal year, nine weeks of revenues, expenses that, that will come in. So this is something that the Controller and her team is looking at on a day-to-day basis and working with, I think, our groups just to make sure we get good information out. And we also wanted to point out, like I said before, we're trending to show a negative cash flow in the month of April. But then we also have a trending cash disbursement lower also. I mean, I think with the COVID, it's like a plus minus. But I think the key things that we do have to keep in mind is that there will be a reduction in receipts compared to previous years. It's just hard to pinpoint what's going to come in. So that's why it's important for us to make sure that all cash receipts and disbursements are being recorded. And as they are being recorded in the system, our Controller and her team is reviewing the data that's going in. Then we're generating our reports to be able to give a positive, give a good response to the council and also to the citizens of the city. But you guys will see the Controller's response to the city finances. Like I said, it got filed today. You guys can review it. And then we can answer any questions you guys have from there.
Councilmember.
Well, Delano, from the previous reports, we had a deficit anyway in April. What is the difference of the deficit from what we previously had to what is currently projected?
Under which reports are you referring?
Cash flow. To get to where is the real difference? Because we already had from the previous cash flow, a deficit. So what's the difference from the pandemic and the impact as far as our cash flow than what we had prior to that?
Greg.
I mean, I can, I can certainly look at the, the last projection and the current projection. I think, I think March finished a little higher than anticipated, but you know, obviously receipts are going to take a, you know, big hit in April and May. And you know, hopefully it kind of turns around in, in June, but you know, I, I think it's kind of a, you know, one month at a time and then see where April finishes up and then kind of try to project May and June from that, from those, from that information.
So, so you said our receipts for March were a little bit higher?
Yeah, I think, I think the number was, I mean, not the receipts, but the overall cash, I think it was a little bit higher than, you know, it originally anticipated, but you know, it, it is just a projection. And I try to be on the conservative side, so you don't want to, you know, be too, you know, it's all dependent on, you know, disbursements as well as receipts.
But, but Greg, even in that projection, you were conservative in that, right?
Yes. So it's really, I mean, it's difficult to kind of look at history and, and, you know, because we're in uncharted history now, like what it's going to look like. You know, April is, you know, is, is, is not looking, I mean, I know that from a sales tax perspective, April was, was, was pretty good because you're kind of getting receipts from previous purchases. So it really hadn't hit the beginning of April cash sales tax receipts.
So, so we'll see that this in April definitely though.
Yeah, the first, the first couple, the, the, the beginning of May, we'll get a, a sales tax. And then a week after that, we'll get another sales tax receipt. So those will be the big, you know, see, see where those numbers are. I mean, I know there was, you know, I, I'm not, I have no idea where those, you know, I'm optimistic that they're going to be better than I think, but I have no idea where, where they might be.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the Controller's Office? Wolf said that to Finance. Thank you very much. Public Works.
Good afternoon. Mike Finns here.
Good afternoon. Go ahead, Mike.
I will, thank you. I'll, I'll just kind of do a quick rundown of our items and then open up to questions. The first change in contract, City Hall Improvements, ninth floor. That is for the consultant who incurred some additional costs when we originally bid the contract out. It came in significantly over budget. So we asked them to scale it back and add some alternates. There were some additional costs as a result of that. Items eight and nine, change in contracts for two projects with Division of Water. That's work inside the plant, but as they were progressing the work, encountered unforeseen conditions as we find within over 100-year-old building. Number 10, change in contracts for Titan Development. That's simply to swap what was originally programmed as bond funding for CDBG. We found that we had some additional CDBG funding. So we're going to utilize that at Mullen Park, which is an eligible location. And then utilize that bond funding on a, on a separate project. Number 11 is good news. A donation was made to the animal shelter by a volunteer who passed away. And it's just permission for myself to execute the documents and accept that donation. The next three, 12, 13, and 14 are grants that we received from the state for bridgewashing Niagara Street Phase 4A and Walden Street pavement rehab, all federal highway grants passed through the state. And then the last four, Allendale Theater and three for Crane Library, report of bids. Those are projects that we recently took bids on and are reporting those results to you for approval so that we can advance projects. And I'll just say, make a general statement. I think many of you probably saw the governor's comments yesterday about starting to open up various sectors with construction being the first. So we're anticipating that, you know, even though we've been proceeding with essential projects, some non-essential projects that have been paused, we'll be able to resume shortly. And moving on these items at your meeting tomorrow, allow us to be ready once that pause order is lifted. And with that, I will open up to any questions.
Mike, do you know when that pause order is going to be lifted so we can let folks know? Because we've, we've gotten complaints, at least I've gotten complaints at my office with regards to construction that's going on, non-essential construction. So if you can let us know when there's going to be a pause in the non-essential construction, when they're going to lift the pause.
Yes, I, I will do that. I don't have any specific information other than to relay that the earliest it could proceed is May 16th. Right now, we know the pause is in effect until May 15th. And what the governor's comments was in his remarks, I believe yesterday or Saturday, was that considerations are being made to start to phase in various elements of our economy when it's safe to do so. And I'll certainly let you know that because it will also then affect private construction, which for the most part would be non-essential.
Any questions for the Commissioner? Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Is there someone there from Corporation Council that would like to speak on item, I believe, 26?
This is John Heffron.
John Heffron, how you doing? Go ahead, John.
Good. Hi, everybody. It's been a while since I've seen you. I did have a little difficulty with the Zoom, so I'm only on voice right now. But essentially, this is the, the parking ramp. It's a two-level subsurface parking ramp under the One Sonica Building. That's the building that Doug Jamal is renovating now. And the development agreement from back in the year 1970 called for the city to basically reimburse the developer at that time approximately $2.9 million for the construction of that subsurface ramp. And the deal was, and it is in writing, and that is actually the document that was attached as a substitution. It's a rather lengthy document, but the people in the law department at the city felt that it would be good to have that document, at least on record for your reference. But the, the long and short of that 1970 development agreement is similar to the main place mall parking ramp that we did last year. Is the city would pay for the construction reimbursement. It was $2.9 million. And then the city would run the ramp and collect the parking rents for 50 years. So the 50 years is up and will expire May 18th of 2020, which is in about three weeks. And this deal allows the city to continue to operate the parking ramp rent-free for up to 24 months after that reconvenance. And that is why the document or the communication in front of you has two parts. One is the, the reconvenance, and the second is working arrangements out with Buffalo Civic Auto Ramps that continue in operations for up, up to 24 months after the reconvenance. And other than that, there's really not much more to this. It was, it's kind of preordained, very similar to the development agreement that was in connection with the main place ramp reconvenance that we did last, I think it was July 1st that we reconveyed that one. With that, I can open up to any questions.
Okay, what happens after the 24 months after reconvenance?
Yeah, so 24 months after reconvenance, the city would, if it wants to, continue to run and operate the ramp. And at this point, that is what the parking and OSP desire to do. After that, the ramp would just be operated, it would be owned starting next month. And then after two years, 24 months, it would be run and operated by either Jamal or whoever he engages to do the parking operations. But at that point, the city would be out of it.
Any questions? No questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Heffron.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Am I out set for now?
Yes, unless there's any questions for you. Is there any questions for Mr. Heffron? There's no questions. We're going to move on. I will start right from the top.
Everyone.
Thank you. Okay, there we go. Item number one, receive and file. Item number two, elegant pilot agreement. Council President.
I'm sorry, I was trying to get to the mute. Yeah, that's fine to approve tomorrow.
Approve? Item number three, various addresses on Adams, Genesee.
That's mine to approve tomorrow.
Approve?
Yes.
Number four, finance. Five, civil service. Six, receive and file. Items seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 are approved. 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18 are approved, I believe. Number 19, DPW, point labor. Does that go to civil service? Civil service. 20, civil service. 19, civil service. 20, the civil service. 21, 22, 23, 24, the civil service. Item number 25, appoint lieutenant. That's a late file. Does that go to civil service? Corporation Council, that's the one we just discussed. Seneca One Parking Garage Transfer Substitution, approve. 27, finance. 28 is a receive and file. 29, civil service. 30 is a receive and file. 31 is a receive and file. Submissions, submissions are marked. Let's see. Number two, lodging house. 115, 117, Glenwood and Elickit.
Can you send that without rec, please?
Send it without rec. Resolutions. Item 32, approve. 33, COVID testing in Buffalo, that. Elickit University.
Just ask for it to be approved, adopted.
And actually, if possible, if prison doesn't mind, I'd like my name to be added to that as we all share.
Okay.
The goals.
34, legislation. 35, the legislation as well.
Councilmembers, we also had Nadine Morero from Strategic Planning, if anyone had questions there.
Any questions for Nadine? Thank you for joining us, Nadine. Anyone?
Majority Leader, not for Nadine, so I'll wait to see if anybody has any questions. But I have a comment on the budget.
Okay, Nadine, if there are no questions for Nadine, Council President, go right ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted the public to know the budget hearings, as we have stated our set, that we will have all of our deliberations about the city budget live on Facebook. We will be doing it from Zoom. And we will continue with what we normally did with the public being able to be a part of that meeting and to have a public hearing. We will not stop the public hearing. So I was just hoping, and maybe we'll do this tomorrow in the council where we read, of course, you'll read it off, but I just wanted the public to, to know that nothing will change as far as public input. Oh, thank you. So that these hearings, when the budget is released, begins on Tuesday, May 5th, and then on, continues on May 6th. And the public hearing will be on May 6th. And people can begin already, as soon as the budget is released, to call in in advance if they want to put something on the record or make us noted, or notify us, or they can email in advance, or they can get on the Facebook Live. And we can, we will hear through staff what their comments are. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Thank you. No further questions. Thank you, guys. Stay safe.
Majority Leader.
Yes, Chris.
Yeah, I just wondered if we could revisit item number 35, the amending the Chapter 20 budgeting.
Okay, revisit item 25?
Yeah, thank you. I was taking a look at this ordinance and I'm, I'm opposed to having any conversation right now that would entail taking revenues from this year's upcoming budget and setting it aside while we might have to make cuts to services and/or workforce possibly at unprecedented levels. And we have Albany telling us that we can anticipate up to a 30% reduction in state aid. I think we all know that our sales tax revenue is going to be in the tank. And the messaging coming from the federal government as of late last week was that we could prepare to file bankruptcy because they're not inclined to provide any assistance to states or municipalities. There are a number of revenue sources. In addition to that, they're going to be impacted as a revolt of this COVID situation. They're going to create revenue shortfalls into tens of millions of dollars. So I just don't want to go ahead and have any conversation or do anything that's going to exacerbate the problem by pulling out revenues that would pay for services and/or payroll and lay off additional members of our workforce or eliminate those services. We see municipalities all across the country bracing for layoffs of 10, 20, maybe 30% of their workforce. And make no mistake about it, without federal assistance, we are going to be in that very same and painful situation. So I personally, and I strongly believe that going ahead and having a conversation where we're removing funding from this year's budget to set it aside for a later date while possibly eliminating those services and possibly additional workforce, I think it makes the council seem kind of out of touch with what's taking place in the country and on the ground here in the City of Buffalo. You know, people are scared. People are scared they're going to lose their jobs that work for the City of Buffalo. And I think we will only stoke that fire a little bit and fan those flames of fear if we continue to have that conversation at this time. I know that the, the charter itself calls for a fund balance policy, but I don't think that this year is the time we should be looking to removing revenues while we might have to, as I said it several times, lay off additional workforce, eliminate those services. So I would be, I would be a no vote on this.
Right, right. And I think that I, I believe that we all share the same concerns regarding the budget. And I don't think anybody is saying that this resolution or this item that we're passing or sending to committee in any way is going to negatively impact or impact the budget at all for that matter. We're talking about a conversation that we're going to be holding. It's going to be in committee. This might get a pass. This might not even take place for a year from now, but at least we're having a conversation. We understand, we're all aware of the national problems and the state problems and the budget. We had talked about doing this back during the State of the City address before the pandemic. This has been going on for a while now. And I don't want to put any fear in people's minds and hearts that this is going to take away jobs. No, it's not. We're just going to have a conversation. I think we're all cognizant of what's happening in state and the federal level. And I think we're responsible. I don't think any of us are irresponsible or we're going to do the wrong thing. This is a matter of putting something in committee, holding a conversation with the Administration Controller's Office, something that the state controller has suggested, just recently suggested that we need to have a policy. Other cities are doing it. It's something we've been talking about for a while now. I don't want to put fear in people's minds and heart because we file something, all of a sudden people are going to lose jobs. That's not what it's about. It takes all of us working together. This is just holding a conversation that the administration itself said during the State of the City that they were going to hold immediately after, but before the COVID. So I understand, we all cognizant what's going on with COVID and how this has impacted our budget. And so when, as we move forward, any decision has to take that into account. I think we're all cognizant of that. I don't know if there's any other questions.
Yeah, if I could just follow up, the, the State of the City was a lifetime ago compared to what things, how things are taking place now. And as far as doing things in the past, nothing was done in the past. We have to deal with the present right now. And none of us know what's coming down the pipe. We don't know how long this could go on for. We don't know if there'd be a second wave. So, and the legislation clearly calls for budget year 2020, 2021 to start pulling aside revenues for a later date. And I'm completely uncomfortable with the idea of it and even having the conversation. I know you don't, you're saying we don't want to scare people, but that's, that's all well and good, the intentions, but I'm talking the reality of it. And when people see this and say, oh, they're going to pull additional money, have to set it aside, and I might be laid off. I can tell, I can tell you, people are already having that conversation. What am I going to be laid off? What's going to happen down the road? I think it's completely irresponsible to have that conversation at this time. So again, I'd be a no on this.
Okay, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, Mr. Chairman Toglu, I'm back.
Joe?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm only, I had a problem getting onto Zoom today, so I had to listen by phone. But I concur with Chris as well. I mean, I just think that, you know, now is not the opportune time, you know, to be talking about this because I've already been receiving phone calls from people that are low on seniority that are asking me, am I going to have a job? And my answer to them has been, you know, I don't know. And that's the problem right now is that, you know, as well-intentioned as we are with any policy whatsoever, we just don't know at this point what's going to happen. I'm hearing all sorts of rumors about, you know, other, you know, branches of government. I'm hearing rumors about what's going to happen with us. We'll know come May the 1st, but I'm going to vote no on this as well because I just don't think it's the right time to be bringing this up. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Wyatt, go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. I understand my colleagues' concern. And of course, we, none of us are insensitive to layoffs. None of us want to see people out of their jobs. However, we've known for the last several months that the city has been running a deficit at times, just as we talked today. For next month, we're going to have a $10 million deficit. The month, the month after that, a $38 million deficit. So we've been having financial problems that we've been kicking down the road, and this, this pandemic just exasperated it. However, it's, I think now is the time for us to put things in place. No one said we have anything this year. We, we're not forced to, but we need to have the conversation because as the school board has a $200 million cushion, the Erie County has a $150 million cushion, we have zero because we haven't addressed this. And there's always never a good time to address something when you're in a bad situation, but we haven't been in a good situation for the past couple of years. So I think we're being very responsible because we should have something in reserve to deal with this. Even with this pandemic taking place on this agenda, we're still hiring people. It doesn't seem as though we're taking it as seriously as we should. We shouldn't be putting people on the payroll when there's a possibility they may be laid off. But again, this is nothing but a conversation. This is not something that we've approved as a conversation. And I don't know why my colleagues would not want us to at least have a conversation as the legislature we are to make a decision for the best interest of the citizens of the Buffalo and the City of Buffalo. Thank you.
And, and I'd like to add to that, if we're going to lay people off, if we're going to have a tough budget, it's not because of a lack of fund balance policy. It's because of the policies that we have right now currently. So to blame all of this on. Uh, so to blame all of this on, uh, legislation that we're considering going into the future, not even now, not even into this, perhaps not even into this budget after we discuss it in legislation, um, is, is incorrect. Uh, if we're having financial problems, it has nothing to do with the fund balance policy. It has to do with policies that we have. The state, uh, Controller's Office said it clearly that we should have, city should have a fund balance by to deal with exactly the problems we're going through right now. In case there's a pandemic in the future, we should have some policies in place. Other municipalities, other governments have done this. We're fortunate that the Board of Education has two hundred million dollars in reserve fund that we can borrow from, that we can borrow from to pay our bills because we don't have a reserve fund in our own account. So this is something that's for conversations. To say we shouldn't have a conversation is kind of, wow. Uh, I can see, uh, actually implementing something, perhaps some concerns about the implementation of this. But the conversation that needs to be had is going into the future, how are we going to rectify this? So, um, if there are any, any other comments?
Uh, Majority Leader?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, I, I understand also, uh, the concerns, and I want to be very clear. I would not vote for a policy, um, that, um, in any way at this point that tied the city's hands, um, and that laid off anybody by us not having the money. I want to be clear, and I think everybody on this call knows, every single policy, almost every single policy that has come before this Buffalo Common Council, we have amended in some ways and tweaked. So the portion, and I, I agree with all, all actually of my colleagues who have spoken, the portion about that was written in, and it was written in actually before, because we were having these conversations, um, with, uh, the portion that dealt with this budget year. I've talked to the sponsor he's on right now, um, and there wasn't, that wasn't set in cement. We don't even have a policy uh, on the table yet. So I think we are all sensitive to that. But I do think that not, that to not even begin to formulate a policy that might take a year because according to, uh, the, uh, the charter, it is not just the council that has to decide. It is the council, it is the administration, and it is the Controller's Office. So that conversation could take some time to have. Um, but I think that, um, it is necessary because we already started talking about this. Um, and I think that this council is responsible. Now, I don't think, I know that this council is responsible enough not to set forth a policy that would in any way at this period, and especially in this time, tie the hands, um, of our money, um, so that we are able to continue to employ people. And I've said it, uh, people tried to get me in a corner to say, uh, layoffs, you all are talking about layoffs. What I'm talking about, and this is only me, um, I can't speak for everybody, is how do we get in more revenue? What I'm talking about is how we do deal with the federal government, our state government, any place we have to, um, to look at more revenue to come into the city of Buffalo. Um, and at the end of the day, though, I don't think that, because there's a lot of things that we could not talk about right now, but I think we've got to look down the road. We've got to say, sooner or later, when do we have the conversation? Uh, but it's not law. It is not something that I think is going to happen next week or, or to be very honest, probably even in this budget cycle. But it does get us to start talking about how to do, how to become more efficient, um, in our budget process. And I don't, I don't know if there's ever a right time for that. Um, and I think that because finances are always tight. Um, you know, if you look at your personal situation and you, if your finances are tight, you know, most people don't want to talk about budgeting. So it's like, well, we can't talk about it now because kids got to go to school. Can't talk about it now because, so I think it is okay, I'm, I'm okay with it going to committee because it's not being voted on. It is only sending like we do every other policy, um, so that the public can have input, people can have input, um, and we can start to set policy about our finances so that, again, and I think that Councilmember Wyatt said it, so that if we ever find ourselves in another situation, we're not accused of not doing anything. That, hey, you guys felt that pandemic thing, and then you didn't do anything. You wouldn't even talk about it. Um, and this pause, this pandemic, we think it, that it could last months. Let's be honest, we really don't know. We didn't think it would be this bad. This could be something, and I'm just saying it in the air, that, that ties us up for a year, year now. We don't know. Uh, but I think that to set, uh, to just start having a conversation that has, and let me be clear, not, we're not starting, this conversation didn't just start now. This conversation started before, um, and it's, it's not in any way, um, would I vote for a policy at this point that would tie the hands, but I, I, I don't mind having the public conversation.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Rivera?
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Winkle.
Uh, I don't know if Jim can pull up twenty dash seventeen point two on this, uh, document here. This is a budget amendment, and I do understand all of the sentiments with my colleague, of my colleagues. But, uh, just to be clear, I'm not ready to vote on anything that looks like a policy during this pandemic. So here it is here, twenty dash seventeen point two. Um, this is more than just a conversation right now. This is literally saying that we're going to discuss an unreserved fund balance beginning fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. And that must be done between July first and July thirtieth. Uh, the city must establish its contributions and know where the fund is coming from before the end of this fiscal year. So that, to me, is what's unsettling and what makes me very, very cautious regarding this, um, document that's been filed, as well as in the, the, the prior paragraph, where it says that the goal that should be part of every approved city budget of, uh, point zero five percent. And then, of course, the governing body may require that revenues beyond one percent of budget be applied to avoid future debt for property taxes, so on and so forth. Um, so my issue is that this is clearly a document that is intended to be discussed to change what our current charter says. And then it even goes, uh, into what funds we will use toward, uh, the fund balance. And I was a little confused in the document, um, because it, it says we would, if Jim, you can go down to twenty nineteen. Uh, number two, it says whenever committed restricted and unassigned funds are available for expenditure committed funds should be spent first, restricted funds second, and unassigned funds last. The, there are, there's a, there's a myriad of conversations that could be had about this document that needs explaining, that we could have talked about offline to make sure those conversations are had. And if the purpose was to just have, uh, dialogue or discussions about it, we could have just continued having the discussions and dialogue about what we've already have submitted regarding the, the fund balance. So, uh, the reserve fund balance discussion is absolutely necessary. But right now, I think what's, uh, most important for us to talk about is how we're going to, uh, sustain ourselves uh, through this pandemic that we're, uh, going through right now. So again, I, I, I can understand all of the sentiments of my colleagues. Um, but again, uh, I'd, I'd rather not this go to committee as well, only because uh, this is a document that is suggesting that we're going to amend current legislation, and if we were just going to have a conversation about it, then we should have submitted something that said, let's have a conversation about these, uh, uh, few components because this is a complete, uh, iteration, um, uh, a, a new iteration of what we can use, uh, regarding the fund balance in the future. So with that being said, I'm, again, I understand the sentiment of all of my colleagues, but, uh, I'd rather not have this go to committee as well, only because of those, uh, those reasons. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the time.
Any other comments? No other comments? It's going to legislation?
Yes.
Yes, it's going to legislation. Thank you very much. And as, as the Council President said, uh, any legislation that we, uh, we propose can be changed, amended, tweaked, uh, during this discussion, during the committee meetings as community, as people, uh, come in and, uh, share their concerns or their likes or dislikes with regards to legislation. We can amend it. We can change it. It's not written in stone. Uh, so this is just holding a conversation, as Council President had mentioned previously. Farrah Lottel?
Yeah, I just have, um, just a couple of comments. I certainly understand the everyone's desire and wanting to talk about the fund balance and the, the concern that I had is that it says that it would be a, the, what's proposed would be effective for this current budget. And I know, as the Council President said, a lot of times we submit legislation, resolutions, they get amended and changed through committee and from sometimes when things are initially introduced, they're completely different from what we vote on. So I'm, I'm comfortable having conversations about this as long as it's not for, as long as we're on the same page that this is, is, is not this budget that's coming up for twenty twenty, whether it has to be changed to a resolution or something. I just, because it causes a lot of stress and fear if it's going, if the way it's submitted now with this current budget, we would essentially have to cut a certain percentage of this current, of the current budget, which we get on May first, to put money aside. And I agree that we should be having this policy, but again, I'm, I'm comfortable with having these conversations as long as it's not for this budget that we're getting handed to us on May first or delivered to our houses or offices, or however that's going to be. And it's looked at being addressed, um, separately, and definitely not for this budget.
Okay. I think we're in agreement.
Can I, can I ask, um, Councilmember Wyatt, who's the author, um, just to make sure it's on the record that he, you are willing to, I mean, to talk about some amendments to this, um, even possibly before tomorrow's meeting where we still send it, but maybe amend it a bit to address some of those concerns?
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you. Thanks, Majority Leader.
Thank you all.